Thank you very much. First of all, I'd like to welcome our candidates to tonight's candidate forum and also all the residents of Village of Germantown who are participating as well. Earlier this evening, some of you may have been on the WebEx video conference for the school board. We are now looking at the village board vacant seats, which are District 2 and District 4. Candidates for each of the districts, I'm just going to ask you to say good evening, if you would, and Bill will just start with you, okay? Good evening. Can you do your last names too, as you go around, please? Noe Reuther. I can do the German pronunciation, Bill, okay?
Good evening. Kevin Schadron.
Good evening. Jan Miller.
Good evening. Wyatt Weir.
I'm going to go through a few things with the candidates and also so that those who are joining us remotely know the process and the format for this evening, but given the world we still live in today, and for now, we are excited that we can still have this valuable approach to village races and in particular here, the village board vacancies this evening. I have said before to people, doing candidate forums is awesome because it is the purest form of democracy that we're going to find at local and regional levels where you at home, at least this evening, get to hear the exact thoughts, positions, and responses of the candidates to questions that have been submitted primarily by residents of the village. We have had some comments and questions submitted by businesses within the village as well, so it'll be a mix of those. We will try to get to all or as many of the questions as we possibly can, so be patient. If you didn't hear your question, we'll make sure we try to get it in as we move along, but we do have a finite amount of time, but we'll try to use as many as we can. Candidates will have the opportunity to present an opening statement, which is two minutes each. Then each question, they will have one minute to respond to that particular question, and then at the end of tonight's forum, you will have two minutes to do your closing remarks. The first question we're going to be beginning with will be Bill, and then we'll work from left to my left to right, and the second question will be Kevin, and then Jan, and so forth, and so we continue to rotate that so that each of the candidates has a chance to answer a question first. Each of the candidates also has an opportunity during this time period to close out a question. One of the things we're going to ask that you do, because the camera angles don't always show the name tags in front of you, I'm just going to ask you to raise your hands so that our audience at home is able to know, okay, that's Bill, or Kevin, or Jan, or Wyatt, okay? Any questions from our candidates at this point? Okay, that's it. You don't get to ask any more questions. You just have to answer them now, okay? So as I mentioned, Bill, you're going to be first on the questions we're going to address, and you'll see questions from a variety of different topics, and I'll try to, I've tried to mix them up a little bit as much, so it's not three like questions in a row. The first question that is going to be posed tonight, and it seems like a fairly logical one, is what community issues and concerns are priorities for you?
Are you going to let us?
Do we have an opening statement, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. I went right to the questions. I was excited. I wanted to hear what you were going to answer. All right, Bill, we'll let you do your opening statement, okay?
Well, thank you. I'd certainly like to thank the Germantown area Chamber of Commerce and certainly all the residents, voters at home that are watching this evening. I'm Bill Nyreiter. My wife Sandy and I recently moved to Germantown. We live on Sawgrass Court. My employment background includes 31 years as a credit manager at Briggs &amp; Stratton in Milwaukee. I also ran my own credit and collection business, and currently I'm a business manager for two parishes in Washington County. My wife Sandy teaches at St. Boniface Grade School, and I have two adult children, Ben and Therese, who also attended Germantown High School, and I'm proud to say I also have four grandchildren. I have an accounting degree from Spencerian College and graduated from Concordia, and I have over 20 years of local government experience, so I'm familiar with preparing budgets, serving on planning commissions, working on land use plans, and I certainly realize the importance of zoning and know how to keep taxes low. And if I'm elected trustee for Germantown, I will work to keep your taxes low, and I really don't feel there's a reason now to raise taxes, and I think we have to work on streamlining what of our expenses are. And I strongly support the 2050 comprehensive plan. I was really impressed last night with the hour that we had online. It was well done, and congratulations to the village and staff here. I also support local businesses and certainly want to work with the Chamber of Commerce. These are tough times for businesses, so definitely we as a village board should work with them. And I also just want to thank those brave men and women who serve on our fire and police departments.
Mr. Nyreiter, thank you very much for your opening remarks. Kevin Schadron.
Hello. My name is Kevin Schadron. I currently live on the corner of Pilgrim and Frechstep. That is going to be my forever home. I have lived in the village of Germantown for my entire life. I'm only 34 years old. I feel like I'm 50 sometimes, but here I am. I was born and raised in Germantown. I graduated from Germantown High School in 2005. After I graduated, I became a firefighter EMT with the Germantown Fire Department. My last five years of that, I was a lieutenant. Being on the fire department gave me great insight to working with the village and the inner workings of all the departments, not only the fire department. I am running for trustee because I believe that Germantown is a great community and a great place to live and work. I would love to have an opportunity to have an impact on the village of Germantown in the future. I think it's time for some fresh perspective on the board, someone with an understanding of new practices and needs of a growing village. I currently work in the construction field, and I think, feel that that would give me great help, great insight to making decisions when it comes to new construction. Thank you.
Hello. I'd like to thank the chamber and the village for putting on this forum tonight. My name is Jan Miller. I'm running for Village of Germantown Village Trustee for District 4. I grew up in the metro Milwaukee area, and I've been a resident of Germantown in District 4 for 26 years. I moved to Germantown in 1994, drawn by its open spaces, natural surroundings, high-quality school, low taxes, and rural heritage, many qualities that make Germantown a great place to live in. As your trustee, I am committed to ensuring that Germantown remains a great place. After 44 years as a sales professional in the food industry, I decided to retire last summer. I concluded that I needed to focus on the most important things in my life. My activities now consist of spending time with my family, friends, and giving back to the community I cherish, Germantown. I continue my 27-year history of volunteering with a leading food industry association. I also volunteer at River Edge Nature Center and local events such as Germantown My Fest and Windsong Luminary Night. For more than two years, I've been an active citizen participant at village board meetings. Furthermore, I have also spoken on important community issues in front of the Plan Commission, Park and Recreation, and the 2050 Growth Plan Committees. These are some of the reasons why four Germantown Village Board trustees have endorsed me, including Art Sabel, who is retiring. I believe that my various community involvement makes me the most qualified candidate on the ballot in District 4. Thank you so much.
Ms. Miller, thank you very much for your opening remarks. Last on the opening remarks, I know that sounds like an oxymoron, but last on the opening remarks is Mr. Wyatt Weir.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the chamber for sponsoring this forum tonight. Hopefully, you'll learn more about the four candidates running for trustee. I'm a retired sales rep for a trucking company, recently retired last year. I've lived in the district for 25 years. I'm running for District Trustee 4 because I believe it's time for a change in Germantown, which is what you're going to get this year because we're all new up here. There's going to be fresh blood, new ideas that will be on the village board. I've resided in the village since 1996, built my home in Country Meadows West subdivision. I have found Germantown a wonderful place to live and raise a family. I'm the father of two adult children, Brian and Melissa, both attended high school. No longer live in the community, but it was a nice place to raise them, and I decided to stay here. While I've never held elected office in the village before, I have been on the Germantown Ethics Committee since 2010. I retired last year, and I'm looking forward to serving my community and giving back more of my retirement time that I have available now. Hopefully tonight, we can discuss some of the issues facing the village, like taxes, business, residential development, roads, and you, the voters, will hear more about me and my perspective on the issues and be able to make informed decisions on Election Day. Thank you.
Mr. Weir, thank you very much for your opening remarks. As mentioned earlier, we'll begin over here with Bill for the first question, and then we'll rotate, and then Kevin, you'll be first on the second question, all right? To our candidates, the first question is, what two specific issues, community issues and concerns are priorities for you and why?
The two that come out probably the strongest, I feel, again, I'm going to go to the issue of taxes. And, you know, I saw the tax bill on the property that I live in and saw the tax increase of 6.3% on the Germantown Village and the school at 4.1 or whatever, and I just feel that that was a substantial increase. And I don't know the reasons why I was not at that budget meeting, but I think it's something that we need to look at in the future and how we can save money and save taxpayers' money. And I also feel that the land use planning is very significant because you only get so many times to do this, and there's only so much land that is available, and every year, so much land goes away into development. And I thought last night that a lot of the comments, especially on the northern end of the village, were very significant and a lot of diverse opinions last night on what people were really looking for.
Bill, thank you very much. Kevin Schadron, if you could address the question.
The main issue I see that we've had in the village in the last five to 10 years is we've grown very rapidly, and our infrastructure has not had a chance to catch up. Working in the construction field, I do see constant growth, constant growth, and that's a lot of big trucks driving on our roads and ruining our roads. Our police and fire departments are constantly running their tails off, and I think we need to take a little bit of a step back and catch up a little bit. The other issue I wanted to speak about was, I think we need to repair our relationship between the school board and the village board. There's been a lot of forth and a lot of inaction. I think it's time that we try to find some common ground. Thank you.
The two concerns and issues that I've heard raised by my fellow Germantown residents as I campaigned for the trustee position are government fiscal responsibility, and I believe the citizens of Germantown want a fiscally prudent government. And as your trustee, I promise to work hard in ensuring that we balance our budget and spend within our means, and I will do my best to keep taxes down. The other issue and concern is balanced growth. So again, to preserve the quality of life that our Germantown residents have become accustomed to, I believe we must manage our future growth by guided by a clear vision, and we need to ensure the future growth is balanced one, taking into consideration both the economic growth and maintaining Germantown as a desirable place to live.
If you could address the final question, or the final answer to the question here this evening.
I think the two main issues facing the village right now is fiscal responsibility. For example, 2011, our debt service was $40 million. We were paying $2 million a year just to cover old debt. Our 2019 debt service was $45 million. This has hampered our ability to have any tax relief for the taxpayers. The second issue is business friendliness. For years, we have chased away retail and commercial business, but under our current leadership, under the new village president, Dean, that has changed for the better. I will work to keep our business-friendly environment, to fill our business parks, which will contribute to the tax base and provide additional jobs in the village. Thank you.
Mr. Weir, thank you very much. Mr. Schadron, you'll be first on the next question, and I also wanted to mention to individuals that if you'd like the question repeated at any point, feel free to ask that as well, okay? So the next question then is going to be, and a couple of people raised this actually in some of their opening statements, or the previous question is a topic, but as the two of the largest government entities in Germantown, how would you work together with the school district and the school board to coordinate decision-making? Mr. Schadron, if you could address that first.
Well, as I said before, I think that we need to open up that line of communication first and foremost. I have been talking to a lot of people, and I know that there's an issue of trying to get both departments together and sitting down and having conversation, and I think that the best way to do that is just to get all the grievances out and air it up and try to get everything in the open so we can move on. And there's a lot of shared services that we could be utilizing on both ends, and I think we're not going to be able to do that unless we get together and start working together. Thank you.
Hi. As far as the school district and coordinating with them, I did personally go to a school district meeting in January, and I had the pleasure of going in front of the school board and asking them when the village board and the school board were going to have a joint meeting. And the good news is that there is a date set for a joint meeting on August 29th to meet jointly. I think it's really important for discussing opportunities to coordinate our businesses and work together because we are one community. The school district and the village board overlap, and we could probably exponentially do better for all of our Germantown citizens by meeting together. Thank you.
Jan, thank you very much for your comments. Next on this question, Mr. Weir.
I recently spoke to, actually today, I spoke to Mark Schrader, who is the Park and Rec Department Manager, and this has been an ongoing issue for years. The school board and the village board just don't seem to get along. They don't want to let us use their facilities. We would like to use them, but the fees and, you know, all that stuff are just astronomical. There's no reason why we can't sit down. I know we have different time zones, or we both meet on the same days, but they can set aside a different date and sit down with everybody, find out what's the problem. I think there's some bad blood somewhere. Hopefully now, we've got at least two new people on that board that can get a fresh perspective on what's going on. You know, our taxes, no matter where they come from, are paying for schools, roads, everything, and we should be able to coordinate with them and use their facilities also. Thank you.
Mr. Weir, thanks for sharing your thoughts. Bill, we'll come back to you. You get the final word on this question.
Well, I think people, I think the voters in Germantown, taxpayers, want to see this. And I'm trying to think back into history, and was there one time, the Fifth Monday used to be a meeting night when the two would get together, and that's like maybe three or four times a year? But I thought that was, I don't know how many years ago. But I think the, I think we need to do this, I think, first of all, our staffs need to share information with each other and feel comfortable doing that, and then the boards also need to sit down and talk, and I think we have to identify some of the, again, some of the shared problems that we all face. And we have to be very open, and probably some compromising has to go on or whatever, but we just need to basically talk, and I think talk will help solve some of those misunderstandings.
Bill, thank you very much. This next question, Ms. Miller, you'll be addressing first for us, and for the panel, how do you plan to work with community leaders, business, and the schools to create a more diverse and inclusive community? Ms. Miller, if you could go ahead and address that question first. Mr. Weir, you'll be next.
Hi. I believe that we should involve all shareholders of the village of Germantown, community leaders, businesses, and the chamber in a creation of a more diverse and inclusive community. Again, I was at the school district meeting in January, and it is, and I did ask them when we were going to have a joint meeting. This meeting is so important for a first step in really creating a conversation around being more diverse and inclusive in the community. And when you have more people, you have more ideas, collaboration, and success, I believe. So it's a great opportunity to get a more diverse and inclusive community. If we can't do it on a board basis, then how are we supposed to do it as a community? Thank you.
Ms. Miller, thank you very much. Mr. Weir, you're up next.
I believe that we should just have an open-door policy, meet with business leaders, find out what their concerns are. If it's not being able to get workers, I know at one time we had, the Milwaukee County bus system came through the industrial park, but it was dropped because it was only one rider, so I don't believe it's really a shortage of workers out here. The school, that falls back on sitting down with them and finding out what their concerns are so that we can use joint facilities for rec stuff. And as far as diversity, I know the school has a BIPOP issue that they formed a committee that these kids and adults want to be included in a number of things. I know that when my son was in high school, they had some type of a committee set up that all the kids were allowed to get together and talk with each other. Thank you.
Mr. Weir, thank you very much for your thoughts. Mr. Nyreiter, you're next.
Well, we all have to be on the same page, and there are just a couple of simple things that I think we need to do, and certainly we have to, we have to all work together to end all forms of discrimination. And I think we have to engage all of our citizens in the decision-making process that affects their daily lives, and we have to value diversity. I think if we do those things and, again, talk to each other, I think we're going to find success.
Bill, thank you for your thoughts. Mr. Schadron, you get to close this question out.
In the future, I would honestly maybe like to see an advisory committee or something of the sort that would have representation from the village, the school district, the chamber, area businesses, pretty much anybody that would want to get involved. This is something that we need to make sure is not an issue in this village and make sure it continues to stay the great place that it is. We want to have a welcoming feeling in the village of Germantown, and we don't want to ever have anybody feel not included and not feel like we are a diverse community. Thank you.
Mr. Schadron, thank you very much. Mr. Weir will address the next question first, and it's a little bit of a mouthful, so I'm more than happy to repeat it or break it down if anyone would prefer that. And this one wraps a little bit more around economic development and interaction with residential areas. So with an increase in larger corporations relocating to the area and overall growth of the industrial and landscape businesses, give specifics as to how you will work to ensure that Germantown will protect residential areas from encroachment of these businesses. How would you address this to include things like noise and environmental pollution that threaten quiet, safe, and clean areas that community residents are accustomed to?
Last night, the village board had a 2050 online presentation, what their plan was. I've attended a number of these in the past. I think what the village is doing right now with TIF 7 and 8, they are far enough away from any residential neighborhoods. They're basically easy on, easy off, dead a highway. They're not infringing on anybody but farmland out there, which the farmers, most of them are looking to sell. As long as you keep it in a area that does not have residential neighborhoods around it, there should be no problem. Thank you.
Wyatt, thank you very much. Mr. Nyreiter, you are next.
Well, economic development certainly is very important to any community, but I think the thing that has to be carefully looked at and probably controlled through zoning and planning is, how close do we put residential to business, industrial areas, manufacturing areas, and whatever? And we just can't spot things on a map and then hope to build around it. That's why I think that the planning is very important. I was very impressed with the board a couple of weeks ago when they dealt with an issue, with the noise issue and whatever, and I think there was some admitting that we don't have the decibel levels or whatever that we need on the books to enforce it. But they really listened to residents about what they want in the area that they live in, and I think that's an important thing that we need to constantly do. But we also, through this 2050 plan, really have to now set things up properly for years to come.
Thank you, Bill. Kevin, you are next on this same question.
Well, first and foremost, we need to make sure that any current landscape or industrial area and business is complying with all of our ordinances. I know there's been issues with noise and dust and with mud on roads and a high amount of traffic, you name it. We need to make sure that we handle all that first and make sure that we get people into compliance. And in the future, we need to pre-plan. We, out in District 2, out in the, I believe it's TIF 7, there are, it's all farmland. That's a great place. Farmers are looking to sell. There's not a lot of residential. That's a good area to do that. Now to put some sort of industrial landscape area in the middle of the village would be poor planning, and I think we need to do our best to make sure that in the future we prevent anything like that.
Kevin, thanks very much for your views on that question. And Jan, you get to wrap this particular question up.
As your trustee, the citizens of Germantown would be my employer. One of my platforms is balanced growth. It's a sweet spot between the economic growth and quiet residential areas. All residents of Germantown have a say in this process, and I will listen to your input and concerns, but you can be an active participant in the future growth in Germantown. Germantown 2050 Plan is now on the Germantown website, and there is an interactive tool for you to participate. You have the opportunity to provide feedback on what we, what is desirable and undesirable features based on your opinion for various industrial and residential areas in our community. Another platform of mine is preserving open spaces. A buffer such as an open space can be strategically placed between industrial and residential areas, but we need your input. The village wants you to share your vision for Germantown 20, and it's available and open until May, at least. Thank you.
Ms. Miller, thank you very much. Before I read the next question, Mr. Nyreiter, you will be addressing this one first, and then we'll work through the rest of the panel. This one is going to change gears just a little bit to a different topic, but how would you go about gathering feedback from your constituents? Bill, if you could address that first.
I, feedback is what helps us in our decision-making. Certainly today, there are a lot of different ways of doing that. Certainly, you know, my phone number, my email is also available, but I think we need to do more, and I, one of the things that I'd like to propose to do, if it's allowable, I don't know if it is, would be to have meetings for just the residents in District 2 and occasionally have that for them, and if I can use the village hall and invite And if I can use the village hall and invite people. And I know that they're not all going to come running through the door, but hopefully they'll find that these meetings will be helpful. Probably at times invite certain guests or certain staff, if we can, to address issues. Or if there are zoning issues that are important to them in that district, to meet with them ahead of time on that type of thing.
Bill, thank you very much. Kevin, you are next.
I think that is the most important thing about being a trustee is keeping an open line of communication. I think what we need to do is, we need to have listening sessions. We need to make sure that we're out at, be it MyFest or Taste of Germantown or something, even if we have to set up a table and each trustee sits there for 10 minutes. If somebody wants to come and talk to us, they can come out and talk to us. It's, we can't get anything done if we don't know if there's an issue or if there's any concerns. And the best way to do that is just to come and talk to people. That's all we can do. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Ms. Miller, if you could address the question next for us.
Thank you. Communication is the key to every solution. And I've already addressed residents in District Four in conversations. And I, being in business as long as I have, I communicated by email, voicemail, Zoom meetings, WebEx, you name it. But getting out and gathering information and getting it out to our residents is really important. So my plan is to, in each neighborhood or subdivision, find a person that's very interested in the village hall, the village business, and creating better Germantown, and identifying them as the liaison in the neighborhood or subdivision. And I would contact them on a regular basis after every meeting. Thank you.
Ms. Miller, thank you very much. Mr. Weir.
If elected trustee, basically have an open door. My phone number is in the phone book. There will be an email address available to the village website. All the village employees or trustees have a website or address. So if anybody has an issue or problem, they can talk to me. Dean Walter, the village president, lives in my subdivision. I've had issues and problems and questions, and I've had no problem talking to him and finding out what's going on. And he explained to me, hey, this is what happened, this is what's going on, this is the reason why. And I hope to have the same rapport with any of the constituents who vote for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weir. You'll love the fact that my 10-year-old neighbor asked me the other day what a phone book was.
What?
Answering this question first for us next, where do you go from there, right, Kevin? Kevin, you'll be answering the next question first, if you don't mind for us. And it's, what will you do as a member of the village board to attract minority-owned businesses to Germantown?
What I would like to do is I'd like to get out in the community and, again, go back to just the festivals and reach out and invite minority businesses to come, to be included in our festivals, to reach out and have anybody who wants to come into the village. And maybe that'll hopefully spike their interest to come check out the village. I would also like to create I would also like to create a, work with the Economic Development Committee and to try to get some, excuse me. Thank you. I would like to work with, now I can't talk, Economic Development Committee and the Chamber to see what we can do to reach out to the community and business contacts. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Jan Miller, you are next.
I am here to listen, learn, and assist. I am aware that there is a Germantown Economic Development Commission that provides grants for Germantown businesses that apply for them, and I'm in support of this program. I'd also direct businesses to the Chamber of Commerce. I would welcome minority-owned and any businesses to Germantown and encourage them to connect with the Germantown Chamber. They've been in business since 1981, and they are linked to the village hall, the school district, and the community. I would like to explore the possibility to work more closely with the Chamber to attract all businesses. And there, the Chamber really has the networking, business promotion, educational opportunities, and business support. I think that's an association that the village could make and bring minority businesses forward. Thank you.
Jan, thank you very much for sharing your thoughts. Mr. Weir, your thoughts on this question? Be glad to. What will you do to attract minority-owned businesses to the Village of Germantown?
Basically, be more business-friendly. Not only minority, but everyone. We have chased away a number of businesses that have wanted to come out here, some of it by some of the restrictions we've put upon them, that the building must look German in certain neighborhoods. That has hampered, I think, a lot of growth out here. You got to look at what we have for restaurants. There isn't a family restaurant out here. Yes, there's some taverns and some chains, but there isn't a little Germantown bistro or something like that where people can come and eat. That just has not been welcomed out here, and hopefully I can change that. Thank you.
Thank you, Wyatt. And Mr. Nyreiter.
I think too, we need to look to help, whether it's staff here or whatever, that can point people in the right direction. And certainly, we want them to look at the SBA. And right now, I know there's PPP funding that is available. And also to go through the Wisconsin Economic Development Corp., which works with other agencies, corporations, nonprofits, and minority businesses to provide them financial assistance. We should do whatever we can to attract minority businesses to our village.
Bill, thank you very much for your thoughts. Jan, the next question will begin with you. And this was submitted by a Germantown business as opposed to an individual private citizen. But are you open to touring the village-owned facilities to get a better understanding of the behind-scenes look at what staff is up against in managing village infrastructure?
Absolutely, yes. I believe that, and able, part of being able to do my job as a trustee well is to get to know Germantown and its operations. So I do think that it would be greatly beneficial to me to tour village-owned facilities to get a better understanding of how it operates. One way of accomplishing this is that with a behind-the-scenes tour and listening to the staff who have boots on the ground. In my former business, I did a lot of plant tours, understanding production efficiencies, cost savings, and equipment. I would welcome touring any facility that we have in the Village of Germantown. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Mr. Weir.
Yes, I'd have no problem. As a matter of fact, when I was in sales, I was with a trucking company. I used to ride along with the driver, get to meet him and my customers. So you see the day-to-day operations and who they're dealing with. As far as going and seeing how City Hall works, I believe I have a good relationship now with a number of the people. I've known Mark Schrader for a number of years. He was our parking and rec manager years back, left, came back. I've already spoken to the village administrator. I spoke with the chief of police on some issues that were brought up, and I got his input in it. Like I said, I talked to Dean in the past. I have no problem meeting with outside staff or the current staff and seeing how the day-to-day operation really runs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weir. Bill Nyreiter, you are next.
Well, certainly, I would be more than happy to meet with staff and to take a tour of our facilities, and I would use that as a listen and learn. Certainly, it's important to know, first of all, the location of every facility that we own. And then certainly to look at the equipment that they use. But also, more so, more important probably than just touring the facilities is the people themselves, to really get to know the people that work for the village and find out what their needs are. You know, what are some of the things that they can use? What are the things that need to be differently? What are some of their hiring problems? And skill sets that they feel they need, et cetera? So a building's important, but the people that are in it are just as important.
Thank you, Bill. Kevin Shadron, you get to close out on this question.
I absolutely would welcome to take, would love to take tours of every village facility. I would welcome to talk to any village employee and see what their concerns are, what their needs are, what's working, what's not working. We've got to see if something's not working. We've got to see if we can make a change. If something is working, we can leave it alone. We need to take a look at all our buildings and see what they look like. We need to see what the jobs that these people are actually doing, what they're doing, what it takes to do these jobs. And otherwise, we aren't going to be able to make adequate decisions in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Shadron. Mr. Weir, you'll be starting us off on this next question. Excuse me. This past summer, the Black Lives Matter March, composed of students, staff, and community members, was met with resistance and cost to taxpayers. Another march in December was met with even more hostility and resources. How would you have handled these situations differently if you would have?
That is the reason I called Chief Stone, to find out his part or his side of the story. They marched right in my backyard, right down Donjust Bay. And I knew something was up, couldn't figure out what was going on because they had both lanes of traffic blocked, a number of kids yelling, screaming stuff. I figured it was Black Lives Matter. Thank God they had a police presence because that road is very busy. And if somebody had come down from the other direction, they would have nailed them all. And I understand that they wanted to march on pilgrim also, which the police said, no, it is too dangerous. And it was really nothing more than marching over to the chief of police of Bawatosa, who lives in the subdivision next to me. It wasn't really against Germantown, it was against him. And he just happens to live in Germantown. I have no problem with the Black Lives Matter movement. I think there's some very important issues that need to be addressed. And I will work with the police department and hopefully handle any problems that we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weir. Mr. Nyreiter.
The, first of all, this is an issue that, you know, we have to be very sensitive to. And we're a little bit of a disadvantaged because your question says, you know, cost to taxpayers and met with great resistance. So I don't know technically what you're totally saying about that. But I will say this, if the demonstration met all the conditions that Germantown set out for them, was Germantown notified in advance? Are there permits that needed? Were the police talked to in advance? I have a lot of confidence in the police department here in the Village of Germantown. And these are very difficult situations. And certainly, I think planning, again, is something that's going to make protests like this successful. And everyone has that right to protest and say what they want and believe in. But we also need to work with the community to make sure that it is entirely safe.
Thank you, Bill. Mr. Shadron, you're next.
I cannot speak about what I would do differently because I wasn't there. I wasn't involved. I don't really know a lot of the specifics of the situation. I do, I do however want to say that the community does need to support any type of peaceful and safe protesting. And as long as it's peaceful and safe, that we will do everything we can to work with the protesters. If, as long as the laws are abided by and the ordinances are broken. I think that we need to work in the future with the police department to make sure that we have a contingency plan in place if something like this were to arise again.
Thank you very much. Ms. Miller, if you could wrap this question, this particular question up for us. Thank you.
I heard about this incident. I wasn't there. I think we have to keep in mind that we need to keep safety first. The village board must trust the expertise, dedication, and judgment of our village employees. Additionally, we need to ensure that proper resources and training are available for a wide variety of situations that could arise in our community. And we really need to evaluate and review best practices to keep our residents safe. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jan. Mr. Nyreiter, we're back to you answering first for the next question. And this, like the previous question, came from a village resident, as all of these questions have. Living in Germantown, I often see, excuse me, I often see and hear on the scanner that our police department and fire department are often times, quote, overwhelmed, per the individuals submitted the question. What in the future can we do to lessen the burden and keep public safety a top priority? Bill, you would be first on the list for this one.
Thank you. I guess I'd probably shoot a question back to the question is, what does overwhelmed mean? Does it mean that they didn't have enough people power? That, you know, they didn't have enough equipment? That they were rushed into something? I would certainly here want to talk to both the police and fire departments, really to see if, what their side of the story is. And if they are overwhelmed, what do they need? Do they not have enough staff? You know, and what type of event was this? Was this at a fire? Was this at a demonstration or whatever? So it's kind of a difficult question to answer, but I would want to make sure that we are talking to both the fire and police departments, if this is true, which I'm taking it is, if it's on scanner, but to find out why they were overwhelmed and what we can do in the future to prevent this and make their jobs easier and make everybody feel safer.
Thank you, Bill. Next, Mr. Shadron.
First and foremost, we always need to keep an open line of communication with the police and fire chiefs and make adjustments as needed. We need to do our best to ensure that both departments have all the resources that they need. Sometimes it's unfortunate, we have to spend a little bit of extra money, but when it comes to public safety, a little bit of extra money goes a long way. That little bit of peace of mind when you have a fire truck or a police car within the minutes that you need them is a big difference. So I think that as long as we keep an open line of communication with both department heads, we will be in good shape.
Thank you very much. Ms. Miller?
Public safety is a top priority for me. We need to provide a safe community for all of our Germantown citizens. And as our community grows, it will be prudent for us to regularly review our needs and compare them against existing assets. That way, we'll ensure that we have adequate and appropriate resources plus the capability to provide services at a level that will continue to keep our residents and community safe. So yes, keep safety a top priority. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. And Mr. Weir.
Thank you. Part of the problem is, over the years, we've grown a number of retirement communities here. The Gables, the one down the street here. And with that has come an elderly population that, I guess, three times a day, they're over at the Gables. And because of that, we now have 24-hour staffing of ENPs and ambulances. I think we have two ambulances now. We used to have one. Part of this, we Part of this, we need to watch the growth of some of these facilities we're bringing in. The last one that came in, because it was a nonprofit, are not paying taxes. They're helping by donating money to the village, but the taxpayers are the ones that are paying for your police, fire, ambulance, all that protection. And we need everybody to share in that cost. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weir. Mr. Shadron, you will be addressing this next question first, and this one ties, this question that was submitted ties together some of the school district topics that were raised, but also the social justice aspect of some of the questions that you have seen come from village residents. So what would you do, if anything, to support the social justice reform that parents and students within the school district are working towards?
That is where meeting with the school board really comes into play. The village absolutely needs to support all people, and it is of utmost importance that all students and parents feel like they're treated equally and that they're safe in this village. We need to work with the schools. We need to work with the school boards. We need to make sure that all these people's concerns are addressed immediately, to be honest. This is something we can't just kind of let go by the wayside. Not one of those things at all, just it'll go away, it'll fade out. It can't, to be frank. It just, it can't. We need to continue to work on the social justice in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shadron. Ms. Miller? I'm happy to. What would you do, if anything, to support the social justice reform that parents and students within the school district are working towards?
Thank you. I cannot speak for others, but as a trustee, I will listen to issues raised by all concerned parties. It's very important. One of my principles in life is seek first to understand, then to be understood. So citizens will be heard, and their concerns will be taken into consideration. And I would be more than welcome to work with the school board on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. And Mr. Weir?
Thank you. You stated that this is a social justice reform at the school. I believe that's maybe more of a school board issue than a village issue, but it also comes back to the village, because we support a police officer at the schools, a, I think he's a couple days a week at different schools. So technically, the taxpayers are also involved in this, because they're over there making sure there are no problems with, problems with kids and stuff. I understand that, you know, kids have the right to exercise their, the right to vote, or not vote, but assemble and stuff, and they have their groups that they have brought up issues with the school. And I think something that should be addressed with the principal and their counselors, and more of a school board issue than a village board issue. But I would have no problem, if there's something in overlaps, look at it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weir. Mr. Nyreiter, you get to close out this particular question for us.
Thank you. I would look at those reforms to be not only school-centered, but really community-centered, because school is part of our community. And I would be more than willing to meet with them at any time and discuss them. I'd also be willing to research the reforms and look into them. And I got to be honest with you, I will be honest with them and tell them if it's good ideas, something that we need or we don't need. But more than anything, I would thank them for taking the time to meet together and to share with each other and come up with trying to improve our community. I think that's important, and again, I would be happy anytime to meet with them.
Thank you for your thoughts, Mr. Nyreiter. This next question will be the final question prior to your closing statements, so I'll be thinking a little bit about that for the closing statements. We will go in the same order that we did for the opening statements, so Mr. Nyreiter will begin those questions or those closing statements with you. This final question, Ms. Miller, will begin with you. What do you believe is the single most important economic development issue facing the village?
I think that the single most challenging economic development is what we have right now, and it's our 2050 plan. It's hard to wrap your head around going forward, but the good news is, we get citizen input. So I think our great growth spurt here has created a lot of opportunity for all of us. And so I encourage all of the residents to get on the website and get on the 2050 plan and talk to the computer and put your places down where you want to have trails, parks, open spaces, industry, residential, and schools. So it's a great opportunity for everyone, and I hope that we succeed. Thank you.
Ms. Miller, thank you very much. Final question this evening from Mr. Weir.
Thank you. I think the biggest issue right now is the village debt. We need to build that or work on getting that down. It's a lot of money that we've been borrowing for capital improvements and other issues, which the current board feels that since we have low interest, we should borrow and pay for all this, but still have to pay it back at some time. And I think if we close out or work to close out the current TIFs that we have, that'll help part of the tax burden to the villagers, taxpayers, because once they are closed out, that money now comes back to the village instead of paying off the debt to build that TIF. It is now going to help pay the coffers or go into the coffers and help everyone with tax relief. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weir. And back to Mr. Nyreiter.
Probably have two things, but first of all, I would say, as far as an economic development issue is, what do we need more of and what do we need less of in this community? And certainly, the 2050 plan is going to help us in making those decisions. And I couldn't help but notice the other day, in driving through one of the industrial parks right near me, the number of vacancies that are there now, and, you know, properties for sale or leased or whatever. So we have to be careful of what we plan for in the future. But I also think we have to spread out our economic development thinking just a little bit more, and that's something that I learned from our county executive is, and that's to work with Washington County. A business that comes to Washington County benefits all the communities in the county, and especially in the southern end here of the county. Anything that comes into the southern end of the county provides jobs for our people. People go, you know, go out to eat, they shop, and whatever. So I think we have to go with a little broader picture and look at it from a county standpoint as well.
Mr. Nyreiter, thank you very much. And the final question, final answer, Mr. Kevin Shadron.
I think our biggest challenge with economic development in the village is the generational gap. You have retired residents, you have the old-school Germantown, the good old boy, "We want to stay farm, we want to stay rural." You have the "not in my backyard" people. You have the people that are my age, that, to be frank, a lot of people my age, at this point, could really care less. They just want to make sure that they can go to a nice restaurant or go to a nice tavern. You have the people that want business, you have the people that don't want business. It's trying to find a happy medium and talking to all of our citizens and our businesses and trying to find a solution that'll make everybody a little bit more comfortable with development and with preservation.
Mr. Shadron, thank you for your comments. So we're at that stage of the evening where your closing comments to the voters of the village of Germantown will be heard. And again, we'll start with Mr. Nyreiter on my left, and we'll work across until we finish with Mr. Weir.
And I will say this: My record in local government will show that I am conservative, and my spending habits I watch very closely. I'm proud of that record. I also have had 20 years of experience in local government, and I've been on a planning commission, I've been on a park board, et cetera. I've been in a room where it's been filled and people are demanding answers, and I know how to address things. I know how to work out problems. Roads certainly are another issue. That's one of the most popular issues that there are, that there is. And I certainly would want to become familiar, and I know, I believe you have a five-year plan here of what roads need to be done. And unfortunately, we can't get everyone's done as fast as they would like to. But that's something to look at. I also have 30 years of business experience. I worked for a Fortune 500 manufacturer, Briggs and Stratton, and, believe me, you learn how to deal with problems and solve problems, and you learn how to be open and work with everyone. You can trust me, but listen, and I'm going to learn from this. I don't know everything here, no matter how long you're in government, but I'm willing to learn with you, and I'm willing to meet with residents whenever they want.
Thank you, Mr. Nyreiter, and I want to remind folks that Mr. Nyreiter is running for District 2, as is Mr. Shadron. And Mr. Shadron, you are next for your closing remarks.
So I'd say thank you to the chamber for putting everything on tonight. Thank you for the economic development in Washington County, if you're here as well. I just wanted to like to say, even though I'm new to the local government, I'm new to all the government, I really think that I could offer some fresh perspective, not being involved in government in the past, not being involved in any of the planning commission, anything like that. It's all new to me, would all be a learning experience, and I think it would be beneficial to have a fresh set of eyes. I currently, as of last year, I sit on the Board of Zoning Appeals for the village. I have learned so much in the three meetings that we've had with that. It actually, as nerdy as it makes me sound, it's kind of exciting to learn how everything works and the laws work and all that. I've lived in Germantown my entire life. I don't plan on going anywhere. I have served on the fire department. That gave me a whole new eye-opening experience to working with the police department, working with Public Works, working with the village board, when we would come and ask for money for a new fire engine or anything like that. And it just, it's an experience that I think would give me a huge benefit to know, deciphering the needs and the wants of some of these departments after working with them. I just, I would like an opportunity to show that sometimes the new guy can actually do some good. Thank you, everybody, for your time tonight, and hopefully we'll see you soon.
Mr. Shadron, thank you very much for your closing remarks. And next to present closing remarks is Jan Miller, and a reminder to everyone is that Ms. Miller is running for District 4.
My name is Jan Miller. I am your best choice for Village of Germantown Village Trustee, District 4, because I am committed to making Germantown a great community and preserving the quality of life that Germantown residents have come to enjoy and expect. I believe that I'm uniquely qualified for the village trustee, District 4, because I have demonstrated that I am interested in the village board topics by attending most of the village board meetings in the last two years. Additionally, I've been endorsed by four village trustees: Art Zabel, Phil Hudson, Dennis Myers, Jolene Peeper. My platforms are: Government fiscal responsibility. I promise to work hard in ensuring that we'll balance our budget and spend within our means, trying to keep taxes down. Balanced growth. Manage our future growth by balancing our goal of fostering economic growth and maintaining Germantown as a desirable place to live in. Solid infrastructure. I will work to ensure that Germantown has the necessary structures and facilities to effectively service a first-rate community. Public safety. Make Germantown a safe place for all residents. I believe in communication, communication with residents, external, as well as internal village staff. I promise to be accessible by phone, text, and email, and as in everything else I do, I will give 110% to being your village trustee, District 4. I would be honored to have your vote on April 6th. Thanks to the village, the chamber, and the village for this forum. Thank you very much.
Ms. Miller, thank you very much for your closing comments. Wyatt Weir, and again, a reminder that Mr. Weir is running for District 4 as well. Mr. Weir, your final comment.
Again, thank you to the chamber for sponsoring this forum tonight. Hopefully, those of you viewing tonight have learned more about me and my approach to some of the issues facing the village, and how we can work together to make Germantown a better place to live. I have lived in the district for 25 years, so I'm aware of many of the issues facing the community. This is not my first campaign. I ran 19 years ago against an entrenched comment. I run it a number of times, so, kind of like Arnold Schwarzenegger, I'm back. I have been persistent, at least. I have paid attention to the issues over the last 20 years. I may not be endorsed by four trustees, but I will answer to the taxpayers and the voters of this community, not the trustees who tell me how to vote. Hopefully, you know, you learned something about me, and I can earn your vote. If elected, I will work hard to lower the village debt, keep a business-friendly environment to attract and fill our business parks, which will contribute to the tax base, provide additional jobs to the village, and offer tax relief to the taxpayers of Germantown. I thank you and hope that you will vote for Wyatt Weir on April 6th. Thank you.
Mr. Weir, thank you for your closing comments. First of all, I want to congratulate all the candidates for their work in preparing for this evening and for addressing the village residents as to your very specific thoughts. So I want to thank candidates for running and truly demonstrating their commitment to the village of Germantown. Secondly, really, a big thanks to the community members for participating remotely, making sure that participation is alive and well, even though it's using video conference and remote technology, and more specifically, for submitting the questions that are foremost on their minds. I'd like to thank the Germantown Chamber of Commerce for sponsoring and the village of Germantown for hosting. And a message to our constituents who are at home right now: Please exercise your right and choice by voting. Thank you, everyone. Have a safe and great evening.